Good evening, everyone. We have a study session at 5:00. Regarding the budget, council members, are you ready?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle, the floor is yours.
Okay. So I figured we could go line by line down the reductions that we took out of the budget here. We started with a 1.9 million. We made the reductions that took that down to a $3,000 surplus. So we can discuss the changes. We can make some changes before you vote to adopt the budget, whatever council wishes. So if we start with, the first is the city council. You had $25,000 in media services. We brought that down to 10.
So that's the first change.
Yep.
We just take it down 10.
You would like it only taken down 10?
It was down 10, not 15, yeah, on my notes.
So that is what, I will change that, too. So your revised budget will be 15,000 for that line item. The next line item we changed was the district court. We took the 42,000 of capital outlay for the computers out of that line item. Let's see here, sorry.
This is on our backup, councilman.
There's a backup. It's titled Reduction Summary.
Right.
But it is page five of the budget, if you wanted to follow along there, too.
Not there, it's still in the backup.
Move along?
Move on.
Okay. Then for the mayor's office, we took the overtime out completely. And then we decreased the travel and education from 5,500 to 3,500, a reduction of $2,000.
You said that was the mayor's office?
Yes.
So that's going to be page six, right?
That is page six, yes.
Okay. So you get, they had allocated for a confidential secretary, right?
That was in HR, not in the mayor's office. So when we get down to HR, we can talk about that line item if you wish.
Okay.
Okay, moving along to general government.
So what's, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. What was that?
So the floater clerk and assistant manager?
Those are not included in the budget, no. Those weren't included to begin with. They were requested, but they were not included.
Okay.
If we go down to the general government, the supplies line item, we took down to 110,000. So that's a reduction of 5,000. And then sanitation, this year sanitation expenses are actually coming in under budget.
I'm sorry, Michelle, can I stop you for one second? I don't know if you should have that piece so she can show it on the screen.
Oh, we could do that.
Do you want the reduction? Can I put it in there? I'll see if you can put it up.
Yeah, so they can give you the piece where you can project the computer.
Sure.
They know what you're talking about.
That's it? You can share it if you'd like, that's fine.
I don't, because I'm sure you're taking notes.
I am. Okay. I do, but Mariana's going to bring it up, so she can share it.
Yes, you're in the budget, too.
Yep. Okay, Mariana's going to connect there.
Thank you, Mariana.
While she's doing that, the sanitation is coming in a little bit under budget this year. So we were able to decrease next year's sanitation by $350,000. So we brought that down to 3.35 million. Should we wait for Bob to get back or continue?
No, we can go on.
Okay. Corporation council, we brought that down, the contractual services, we brought that down by $60,000 to 75,000. Then moving along to the clerk's office, we did bring the supplies down by $2,000 to 3,500. And the publication notices newspaper, down by 2,500 to 2,500. Okay, Mariana has it on the screen now. The comptrollers department, we took away the overtime, that was $1,000. And then we decreased the professional contractual services by $50,000 to 550. The treasurer's office, we took out the $1,000 of capital outlay. Information technology, we took $50,000 out of telecommunications. Building maintenance, we took out 100,000 of overtime. Then 5,000 of supplies, 10,000 from contractual services, 20,000 from repairs and maintenance, building and grounds, and 4,000 from capital outlay under 5,000. I was just thinking, we did not have any reductions in HR, councilman Saab. So if you wanted to talk about it now, we can do it now, or we can wait until the end.
Sure, I'd like to remove the confidential secretary like I requested before. Position.
Would the rest of council agree with that?
I'm okay with the councilman, yes, I'm okay.
Okay.
So waiting for Bob to...
Sure. I'm just typing that in right now. Okay. Oh, here he comes. I can catch him up to speed really quickly.
Thank you.
Councilman Conston, we were just discussing the HR department. Councilman Saab would like to remove the confidential secretary from the budget. I was just getting councils buy off on that.
We're okay with it. I thought it was a good idea, but if everyone wants to remove him, we'll remove it. You know, the thing to do is to have a, not an employee, but an independent company farm that out, because if someone's an employee and a union member...
Okay. The next line item would be the police department. We took $10,000 out of the overtime. The emergency management, we took 5,000 out of supplies, 3,000 out of miscellaneous...
Hold on one second, please.
Sure.
You said you took out of supply?
Yes, 5,000 out of supplies. We brought that down to 5,000. And then we took 3,000 for miscellaneous expense and 3,000 from capital outlay under 5,000. Then the fire department, we took 10,000 out of the overtime.
One second, I'm sorry, back to the emergency manager position.
Sure.
Can we reduce the travel and education? By 1,000?
Let me pull that up really quickly.
How much is it now?
4,200.
How much?
4,200.
There's 4,200 currently budgeted. So what was the request to?
Reduce it by 1,000.
Okay. The rest of council...
Are you guys okay with that? What's the difference between 4,200 and 3,200?
It's 1,000.
Right.
Trying to balance the budget.
Are you okay with reducing the 1,000?
I would try and...
Education.
It's okay. We can cut more. Okay.
Is everybody okay with cutting the 1,000?
Are you guys okay with it?
I don't see any $1,000, and if it's budgeted, it's 4,200 dollars.
So was that ever in the budget before travel and education for the emergency manager?
That was a new position, let's see. There was 3,250 last year's budget.
And how much of that was used?
There has only been $678 used this year, so far.
I think 1,000. You okay with 1,000?
Okay, just leave it like last year.
Okay.
Yeah, 3,200.
No, no, keep it like last year.
Yesterday was 3,000.
Yeah, but now we have it on full time.
Yes. We always spent 600. I think like 1,000, and if we need to adjust it, we can always...
Do you want to go more?
No, 1,000.
Yeah.
You reduce it by 1,000. He's saying just keep the whole thing at 1,000.
You want to reduce it by 1,000?
Yeah, he wants to reduce it by 1,000.
You want to go to your...
3,200.
I would say let's go with that.
Okay. So I changed. If we go down to building and engineering, I have the building demos. We took that out.
Can we go back to the fire department?
Sure. We just decreased overtime by $10,000.
For the fire department?
Yes, both police and fire. We had a small reduction in overtime.
Was it from 800,000 to 700,000?
790, mhm. So then building demos, we took that out, because most of your building demos are done through the CDBG program, so there's no need to pay for that in the general fund, for the most part. For ordinance, there was the three positions approved. We did take one of them out in the budget reductions. So you do get two positions approved there.
I would like to keep the three positions.
Good night.
Are we going to have a balanced budget? I think as council members, we need to get a balanced budget.
We've got a long way to go.
I know, but instead of like, you know, have, you know, I think, at least it's to stop having two extra.
Three's not enough.
Correct.
Five or six probably. I mean, quite more than that. I'm not in favor of reducing.
Councilman Conston, what do you think?
Well, if they eliminated one position, we can, you know, see how things go and look at it with the two extra, and if we need to add one, we can.
I'm okay with that, too.
You know, if we're going to have to balance the budget, we're going to have to make cuts somewhere.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, I, you know, not that any, just to name cut the overtimes. I'm not in favor of cutting any overtime, I mean, because all it does is, you eliminate the overtime in the budget, but we're going to pay it out anyway. So it's not really reducing the budget. We're not going to, we have firefighters needing to work overtime, we're not going to say, well, sorry, it's not in the budget, you know, you sit at home. Or DPW workers, they're the storm, we're not going to deny the overtime, we're just making it look like we're doing it from a budget.
How much did we spend last year for police and fire, for the overtime?
Let's see. The police, we are budgeting 1.5 million in overtime for this current year. Fire, we are budgeting 900 and...
How much did we spend last year on overtime?
Just to shush it. I keep in mind, we hired more people this fiscal year.
Yeah, so this year we're at 953 for fire. Last year we were at 695 for fire. And police was 1.1 million in overtime.
That's what we spent in overtime, actually?
Actually, in overtime.
You spent more than the budget, a lot more.
So this, yes, both years, we have, mhm.
Thank you. I'm not in big favor of cutting this, but, like I said, you're cutting the $10,000 in fire, and then it's budgeted at 800,000, so it's 790,000. And it's probably going to be over a million actual overtime, you know, I mean, it's really falsely balancing the budget.
I agree.
I mean, it kind of makes sense, yourself.
Oh, I understand the point, absolutely.
You can predict overtime.
Especially with police and fire, Bob.
Police and fire, they're very small reductions that we made in police and fire. The other departments, we would be thinking that the department heads would hold the employees accountable to reduce the overtime, because it's not quote unquote "emergency services."
Why aren't we budgeting overtime according to what did last year? Why budget less than we spent last year?
Because with the police department, we didn't have...
The hiring.
Yeah, we have more hires now.
Yeah, well, since we have more hire, you would think we'd have less overtime.
Right, that's what we're doing, yep. We're budgeting.
But we're still, we're still down quite a bit.
But we have more officers than the year before.
Yes, that's why we reduced the overtime.
How many more officers did we get?
I do not know that, unfortunately. We did budget for an additional six officers, which is, again, why the overtime has been
So how many officers got hired this fiscal, past this whole budget?
I don't know that.
Mr. Turner, do you have that answer?
I'm sorry?
Would you know how many officers were hired?
I'm actually looking to see if, I haven't on this schedule.
Maybe a chief of staff, and maybe a mayor, you know.
I mean, it's up to you, council members. Do you want to just keep it the way it was, or still take off the 10,000 for overtime?
No, I want to keep it the way it was. 10,000, I don't make it.
It's a small amount, but I mean, it's, I don't know, you know, you can figure out how much overtime you spend actually per person, per officer, and see what we did last year. Say it was $10,000 a person, officer, and then budget that much, that many officers this year. Just because we have more officers doesn't really mean that we're going to do less overtime.
You should be, because you have less, more people...
To work.
To work.
Yeah.
Less hours apiece, so...
Yeah, but they're still, we're filling them spots, you know, I mean, so you'd still have spots, and there's still, you know...
Yeah, well, when you have more people full time, there's less overtime.
Yeah, oh, okay.
How many, again, how many, we were down, the chief said, when we were at the meeting, down 17 officers, right, when he was sitting right here during the budget.
Council Protem.
Go ahead, mayor.
Okay, we already went through this, but both chiefs, so they're okay with those numbers.
They are, okay.
Yeah.
I guess they're okay.
Hold on, both chiefs, we have two chiefs?
Chief of fire and police.
Yeah, there's a fire department chief, and there's a police chief.
We're talking about the police department.
We're talking about both departments.
There's one chief for both.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, moving on. So then the part-time ordinance, we took down by 10,000 to 45, because with the hiring of the full time, we won't need as many part-time hours. Same with overtime, we took that down from 30 to 15. Historically, they've spent about 15, so the new ordinance officers will help keep that down. Motor fuel, we took down by 10,000. And capital outlay under 5,000, we took down, we took that out.
So, Michelle, for ordinance, you guys took motor fuel down by 10,000. What was spent last year?
It was, I can tell you in one moment. Let's see, motor fuel, last year was only 6,400. This year we're looking at maybe 20,000, probably less. So we took that down to 20,000.
How would it be less if we're getting two more officers full time and a new animal control vehicle?
Well, this year, so at March 31st, we had 12,000. So if we extrapolate that, that's about 16,000.
It was only April and May and June.
Right. So only about $4,000 total.
To add to the 12.
To the 12, so that's...
Yeah, 16. So 20 next year.
I think 20, which should be sufficient.
Okay. Let's move on. DPW highway, we took out two general laborer positions, and that is because those positions have been vacant. They've been vacant for several years, on and off. There are four in the budget, and there's always been two vacant. So realistically, let's not budget for those.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, so in the DPW highway, there are two general laborer positions that have been unfilled. And over the last couple of years, it's been like a revolving two have been unfilled. So that's why we kept those out of the budget.
Why, I mean, I know, you probably don't know why, but why are those positions unfilled? They're needed, and I mean, I talk to people there all the time, and they, you know, they're short-staffed.
Sure.
Are they just not, Mr. Mayor, are they just not, no one applying for those jobs, or what?
Well, they're always listed.
I mean, we're not hiring, or they're not...
No, we're hiring, so we do have them posted, so...
But no one's applying for those? Well, I don't think you should take it off, I mean, we need them. Let's do some promotion. Everybody out there wants a job at the DPW highway, City Hall.
We can always take them out and then put them back in if they get filled.
Well, okay, as soon as we get done with highway, I'm going to go back to ordinance. I mean, I'm not in favor of reducing it from three to two. I mean, I'm very adamant about that. I don't know, we didn't vote on it, we didn't say anything about this for here, but...
Council. So as you remember, we did have the discussion, Councilman Wenzel, with both council chair and council chair Protem Ahmed. We are going to reorganize the way that we do the ordinance, you know, versus, you know, blight versus, you know, the building department. So we are going to bring one person here to the city hall, and that person will be responsible for business licenses, and also for all the CFOs, including, you know, like anything, the ordinance that we put in place about three years ago, with the rental properties that we have to inspect every three years. So the inspector that we got to bring to the city hall, that person will be responsible for enforcing those. So we have to look at, revisit, we can revisit this in the next few months after July 1st, after we make this, you know, come to light. We can check, see if we really need the three, but right now, we got to bring one person, we got to bring in an extra person to the city hall to work in the building department on the side of the building department, just to make sure that a lot of stuff will be taken away from, you know, the people in ordinance, they can concentrate on blight, you know, the grease traps, and what, you know, the city, to beautify the city. But everything else that the building department can do, because we're wasting a lot of time right now with a lot of CFOs, that, you know, you issue a ticket, and later on you find out that, hey, they applied for a CFO. So all that time was wasted. That stuff could be eliminated. So we're trying to be, work smarter, and by bringing a person here, and that person will be strictly doing business licenses and also CFOs. So if we need to bring another person, but we need to assess this to see if we need another person. Right now, two, you know, we could do it with one extra person, but we granted, you know, two people, but let's give it a chance, you know, just instead of bringing in three people, now, you know, you have three people, then you have to, it's not, you know, you can't get rid of the person if you're proficient, you know, with just only two. So we can revisit this in a few months.
That kind of reinforces my point, though. I mean, I talked to everyone, and, you know, three was not even enough. And now we're going down to two, and one of them is going to be, you know, in the office all the time. I mean, even though you're going to do some work, they'll freeze up another officer. So we need three in the field. I mean, and we're giving up one of the three to go work in the building department and take care of things like rental properties. Now we're only, now we're only getting one.
He's going to be in the field, but he's going to be working hand in hand with the building department. Get hold of us from the building department to go after blight issue, after tenant issue, after CFO issues, so basically, he's going to work hand in hand with the building department.
And also, Council Protem, the way it was also done before, you know, they'll have like two, three people in court, you know, and they waste half a day for three ordinance officers in court. And the way it was done before, again, it was not proficient. You know, right now, you know, with, you know, our current city attorney, they're looking at, trying to optimize, you know, the ordinance officer being on the road more and less time just sitting there waiting for court dates, or, you know, waiting, just sitting there three, four, sometimes there's four ordinance officers waiting for their turn to come up. You know, the previous prosecutor, that's what they were doing. They were keeping police officers and also ordinance officers, sometimes half a day. So again, you know, that's, you know, we're doing something more proficient right now, so let's give it a shot. And if we still need someone extra, then, you know, you guys can propose it again, and, you know, or we can tell you how effective that we will be with the process that we put in place.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, let's not be delusional. I mean, if we need another officer, and city council votes on it, what's the chance of it going through? We did it in the past, and it never went through. I mean, so we're going to take the administration's word. If we need, if you say something in the future, we'll do it. You know, I mean, this ordinance, it's a pet peeve of mine, and I drive around these cities, our city, every day. And we don't have enough ordinance officers out there right now. I mean, there's grass, there's blight. We don't need any more pencil pushers, we need feet on the ground. I mean, we need, we need five new ordinance officers. I mean, I am, I don't know how you guys vote, but I am not, I'm voting no on reducing it down to two. I mean, it's, we need four. I'm going to raise it to four, instead of three.
I support that.
I mean, you know, we'll see what happens, and we'll see what happens, you know, when our city looks like crap all summer. Well, maybe we'll hire someone, you know, next year when grass season comes around again. I mean, you drive around, look, I mean, everyone here, drive around the city. You tell me that every block you don't go down, there's blight, grass, and I talk to all the ordinance officers, say, you know, they got a guy just writing tickets, 200 tickets a day or something, something outrageous he's writing tickets for. And it's one, you know, well, you got one guy doing it, I mean, you know, it's ridiculous. I mean, we're spending money on all these different things, giving people raises, we can't even hire ordinance officers to make our city look good. You know, sure, we're paying people comparable money, that's, I don't get one call say, hey, Councilman Wenzel, are we paying our people comparable to other cities? You know, they're saying, hey, the guy's grass next door to me, the guy's got garbage in his front yard, the guy's garbage cans out in front of his house. You know, 90% of my calls are ordinance calls, and that probably goes for everyone here. And then just to push it aside, you know, that's irresponsible. It should be a main priority, our ordinance, our blight, the way people view our city, the way our city looks, you know, not only to strangers coming through our city, but us. I don't, I've been through it my whole life, you know? I don't want to see this crap.
Okay, let's see, we removed the other position, the secretary, so let's see how the budget looks like, and maybe we can add that position back.
But Council Protem, again, you know, we, for the confidential secretary, we had budgeted for it from last year. You know, we already posted, we interviewed, we're ready to bring somebody on board, you know, for a confidential secretary.
I understand, Mayor, but the council members, they don't want it.
Council Protem, that position was brought up to city council last year, and it was turned down by city council.
No, it's budgeted, yeah.
You guys are honest with us. It goes off the agenda. Please, Michelle, go ahead.
Okay.
We approved ordinance officers, and it was never posted for months and months and months, but a confidential secretary comes up, it's posted, and it's outfilled.
I understand. Councilman Conston.
Thank you, council chair. Michelle, if you know, so these two positions, the DPW positions...
Yes.
They were vacant all last year.
They were, yes.
So why can't we replace them with ordinance officers? That we requested in prior resolution for.
Well, if we're going to balance the budget, if we're going to cut out, you know, the extra... Well, if we're gonna balance the budget, if we're gonna cut out, you know, the, the extra money, we're gonna have to make.
We're already cutting those. Okay, let's go ahead.
Okay, we'll move along. Uh, D P W Highway, still, uh, we cut the overtime by a hundred thousand. Um, the emergency storm, we decreased by forty thousand. The road supply, we cut by seventy-five thousand.
So, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So the overtime for emergency storm, that's when flooding and everything happens.
So the emergency storm is, yes, so forty thousand, that's supplies in relation to emergency storm. So two years ago, you did have a really bad storm that came through, um, cost the city about a hundred thousand. This year, you haven't had anything, so you are at less than five thousand. It's one of those things you just don't know unless an emergency happens. So we figured we'll keep it down, and then if something happens, you know, unfortunately, um, the budget would be amended.
I mean, if actually speaking, we know it's gonna happen, it happens every year, every year floods in the south. I was taking, lowering that, it's just.
Okay, so moving along, we have the street sign, we took that down by four thousand. Contractual services, we took that down by five thousand.
One second, street signs, those are citywide street signs, right?
Yes. We brought that down to sixteen from twenty.
We've been fighting for schools, school size around school zones for a year, we're taking that down?
I think that might be covered by your grant, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, this is different.
Then the tree removal, we did take back down to one forty. It was one forty, then you had requested the two hundred, so we took that back down. Road repairs, we just took that out completely because most of your road repairs, if not all, can be covered by Act fifty-one money. So that can be in the major and local street funds.
So last year, Act fifty-one money was used for, for repairs last year?
It was last year, it, it was not this year. This year, it was all, um, act, well, I'm sorry. The general fund did not pay this year, it was all Act fifty-one.
And which was it?
Um, this year, there was five hundred budgeted.
Thousand or five hundred dollars?
Thousand. This year, we budgeted two fifty, but we figured Act fifty-one money, let's just have them pay for it. You have plenty of Act fifty-one money, that's where it should be going anyways.
How much do we have?
Two fifty. Oh, how much, I'm sorry, how much Act fifty-one money do you have?
Correct.
Um, you have a couple of million dollars in major, and I think four million or so in local. So we have plenty, um, but I can get the exact figures. Budget resolution, hold on one second.
And we can't use that money towards our C S O projects or major projects?
No, it's only roads, major and local roads. So actually, your major, your major will have, um, seven million dollars. And your local will have four, so. Moving along.
Excuse me, Michelle, in the, in the highway, um, what, what's the total reduction?
The total reduction in highway is... Sorry, my.
You mean all the services, also?
Yeah, everything, they're reducing in highway.
Uh, six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
But two fifty is, uh, going to Act fifty-one?
Exactly. Yep.
So that's three, or that's four?
Luckily, for example, repair and maintenance equipment, how much did we spend last year?
Let's see. Last year, you spent a hundred and four thousand. This year, you've only spent fifty-two. So we took that down by seven, or by seventy-five, to seventy-five thousand. Um, part of that is because we're going to try to get most of the repair and maintenance done this fiscal year, before the end of the year, um, because your budget was one fifty there. And then training, um, what's five thousand, we took that down to twenty-five hundred.
Michelle, and, um, the tree removal and, uh, tree planting, where, where's the, the cost for the, um, the permits for tree removal that we got, and the, uh, and don't we have a tree fund somehow, somewhere?
You do, um, that is, it's in the general fund, it is a, um, sorry, I'm pulling it up right now. Um, that is... Sorry, my computer's going slow. So you have, um, about six thousand dollars of revenue for trees, um, this current year. You've spent about two, twenty-two thousand of that balance, so you had a, you had about thirty thousand dollars in the tree fund, like the tree escrow account, um, so that's this year, you've collected.
Where does that money come from?
That comes from residents.
It's the permit fees that you're paying?
Yeah, for the trees.
So that's all we got is thirty, all the trees we're cutting down. How much is a permit to cut down a tree? Do you know?
I don't know.
You're gonna want fifteen?
Mariana, do you know how much it is?
No.
Sixty-five dollars.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five? That's all? Wow, that's cheap.
All right. Moving along to recreation. Um, salaries, we took down by forty-six thousand. Um, that is one clerk position that is open right now. You moved the one from part-time to full-time, and then there is one clerk that has been open, um, so we took that out. And then we decreased part-time by seventy-five thousand. Um, contractual services, we decreased by ten thousand. Rec programs, we decreased the budget from ninety-five thousand to seventy thousand, but that seventy thousand is what you spent this year in rec programs. So it's not really a reduction, it's just not an increase. Um, training, we brought down by two thousand, and then the capital outlay was those fitness courts that are at Canfield that we removed, um, they have not been started yet, so we can remove those.
Questions, one, what was the training last year?
What was the budget, or the actual for training?
Yeah.
It was... So last year was, um, sixty-two hundred.
What kind of training is it for recreations?
It's a great question. I'm not sure what the, what kind of trainings, um, they go to.
I mean, we took out overlay completely, those are, you're talking about the tennis courts, right?
The capital outlay, that's the fitness courts, so the, uh, exercise equipment that was going to be outside at Canfield.
I'd like to know more about that training, the directors here.
What's that, certifications? Okay, so that would be, I guess, certifications for the people who are working in the rec department. Um, and then, so the Richard A. Young, we brought the part-time down by fifty thousand. The overtime, we took that out, and supplies, we took down by just a thousand dollars.
Why did we, uh, the part-time at the Richard A., why did we reduce it to thousand?
So the part-time, so last year, part-time was only ninety-six thousand. This year, we're expecting it to be ninety-seven thousand. So it'd be in line with what was actually spent in the past. And then we have the planning commission, the training, that was actually double counted, so we took that out. Um, the cable TV comp fees, we have a five hundred dollar reduction, and then we took out the repair and maintenance equipment by the, the whole amount, the thousand dollars. Um, public information, we brought down the newsletter expense from forty-three thousand to twenty-five, so it's a reduction of eighteen thousand, um, just based on the activity in there, and we can have some savings by Civic Plus doing some online newsletters. And then professional and contractual, we decreased by two thousand, and the capital outlay under five thousand, we took down to thirty-five, or we took the thirty-five hundred away because we can use peg fee for equipment for the, um, public information. So after all of your changes that we talked about tonight, um, we are down to, uh, fifty-four thousand dollar surplus now, um, after the removal of what you asked for tonight.
So that's without adding the extra ordinance officer?
That is without.
So if we add him?
Then you'll be about ten thousand dollars.
And plus?
And you removed the confidential secretary?
I did.
And it only went up fifty-one thousand?
Fifty-two thousand.
For both positions?
Well, you add, well, no, we, both positions, one position. You took out one.
I guess they removed another ordinance officer?
No, no, no. We were going to add back.
We removed one, and now if we add the third one again, we only have ten thousand surplus?
That is correct.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? That's two thousand.
So that gives you a nine thousand, six hundred, eighty-two dollar surplus.
That's kinda risky, huh?
Well, there's, it's gonna be a lot of change.
It, it's a budget, so, you know, it's absolutely the second that the fiscal year starts. Um, you could go under, you could, you could go over. So I can make these changes in the, the budget document.
Please.
Um, and in the ordinance, the resolution, so you can have that to vote on. Yes, yep.
Exactly.
And I'll just email it to you.
Yeah, please, give it to the clerk, please.
I'll do that literally right now.
What, what, what are you referring to?
Uh, the changes that you made tonight, I can put them into the budget document, and then put that into the resolution that hopefully you vote to pass tonight. Um, and then I'll send it over to the clerk, so she has the updated figures.
So the only thing, Michelle, that will change, though, for the motion is the dollar amount of the budget?
The total expenditures and the fund balance. Yep, that's it.
Any more questions, council members?
I'm just, with, with highway or the six hundred and eighty-one thousand, that's just... It's a lot of money removed.
It is a lot of money.
Keep in mind, two fifty of it was the road repairs that can be paid for by Act fifty-one. So it's about three hundred, about four hundred and thirty. Yeah.
That's still a lot.
It is.
But keep in mind, this is exactly, we match exactly where we've been spending, so.
Well, I know the roads, we have been spending enough on last year, that's for sure. I mean, our, our streets are in bad shape. I know, um, Ali D, if you tell, I don't know, Ali classifies them one through three or A, A, B, and C. Majority of them are in the low end, and every, every street's pretty bad shape. We should be spending a lot more instead of taking money out of the country.
So you, you can still spend on it. It'll just be out of the major and local street funds. You, you're still absolutely, you're gonna spend a lot on streets this year.
Any more questions, council members?
I, I, when, I, at the last meeting, I asked you to look into the, the amount of money that the city's spending on, uh, legal fees and, and, uh, payouts, uh, that weren't covered by insurance, have you, have you gotten any on that?
I have not gotten to, I, I looked at what we spent in M M R M A, but when we look to see what we spent, it's the insurance money. So I, I think it's because it's confidential, once it goes to the legal, so I could not find that, but I can still work with.
I mean, money that's paid out and settlements aren't covered, that should be made aware to us, council members, you know?
And hopefully it is at the time that you're doing the settlement. But I don't know, I don't know.
We can find out.
Everything that the city settles should come in front of you.
Isn't it, isn't it a number somewhere?
The legal fees will be a number, um, but we're not always privy on the accounting side to the legal issues.
Council Chair Pro Tem.
Unfortunately.
We're not gonna discuss any specific numbers since we've done them in our session, in closed session. I just wanna make sure we don't go into disclosing.
No, no, not closed session, it's just.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Number.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know why you can't come up and say, we paid out five million, and not be specific, I don't know, specific how you paid it out. I mean, that's the taxpayer's money.
Mr. Turner, can you come up with that number? Are you able to see that number?
I have not, we, we looked together, I, I.
I mean, it's got, there's gotta be a way to, it's gotta be in, in the computer somewhere if it's paid out.
Yeah.
I can tell you it was not five million.
Well, I, I.
I can, I assure you, it's not that.
Can we look into it?
Yes, absolutely, I will work with the administration.
Okay, please.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, I'm gonna make the changes right now.
Any more questions before we end the study session? I guess we're all set.
I'll go make the changes.
Thank you very much, Michelle, and we'll see everybody at six. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public about the budget? Nothing from the public, anybody on Zoom?
Good afternoon, council members. Um, thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to, to touch base on a few of the changes that you have made today. Um, so although I understand that the three ordinance officers are, are critical to the city, so are some of the other positions that were unfunded, such as the confidential secretary, the clerical in the parks and recreation position. And I also wanted to, to remind you that the three ordinance officers are not simply salaries, but they will also come with additional expenses, as Mr. Winslow hinted towards. They do not currently have vehicles for those employees, so it will be hard for them to move across the city. They do not currently have laptops, it will be expensive to purchase those as well as the software. Um, so again, those have not been taken into account into this budget, um, and I do feel like some of the other vacant positions that are unfilled are still critical to those departments, and, um, and just wanted you to consider that.
For the two positions for the ordinance department to have cars and laptops, or no, in this budget?
It's not in this year's budget, no. Because all of capital was taken out.
Now provide them with cars?
And they can just stay at City Hall?
It's, it's a complicated situation. I mean, they can get rides with other employees, we'll make it work if that is what you desire, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and, and again, Parks and Recreation continues to have the same amount of, of work that they have. Uh, the H R department has needed additional staff for years. They are only two full-time, full-time people for over three hundred employees in the city, um, and that is why we have been requesting that for two years now. So again, it's, it's not that I'm taking away from one department, but I just want to highlight that there are also other, um, departments that have critical needs. So I just want you to reconsider those as you vote tonight.
So I have a question for you, Mariana. Um, you said that we won't, we're okay with considering putting two ordinance officers in one car, that would be the purpose of having more ordinance officers on the road.
We could, yeah, again, we could make it work if that is what you want, it's just, again, right now, the funding is not there for two vehicles.
It's gonna be balanced.
Council Pro Tem, from, from my conversations with people throughout the city, there's more than enough vehicles sitting around for these ordinance officers. Yeah, I mean, we have.
All the animal control.
There's no problem in, yeah, there's no problem in getting a vehicle, that's what I heard, I mean, from reliable sources. And, uh, we, our H R department for probably sixty years ran with two people.
Thank you, Mariana. Any more comments from the public? Please state your name and the city you live in.
Angelo Vanegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. We're worried about funding ordinance officers. If we start writing violations, tickets instead of warnings, the ordinance department would probably pay for itself. I had five or six instances this week, I have an Airbnb next door to me, I called the police six to eight times this week with cars illegally parked. All they got came out was, talked to them, made them move their vehicles, not one person got a ticket. We're losing money. You guys wonder why we got so much chaos in the city, drag racing, street racing, whatever's going on. Drag racing, street racing, whatever's going on? Because nobody is being fined, and things need to change. There's consequences for actions, and we're not doing it.
Thank you very much. Any more comments from the public? Anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No hands are up.
I guess, uh, that concludes the study session, and we'll take a five-minute break, we'll see you at six. Thank you very much.